Oh, hey Cyril, thank you for that bud. Yes, it turns like my mic was down. My apologies, everybody. So here I am talking away and nothing's coming through. So I'll tell you what we're gonna do. I'm gonna start it again. Welcome, welcome. It is Monday, November 1st, 2021. Welcome to Raging Chickens Out to Coop Live. Yes, this is Kevin Mahoney, editor and founder of Raging Chicken. On Out to Coop Live, we talk to progressives, activists, and troublemakers of all sorts, right from our own backyards and across the country. On Friday, Sean Kitchen and I break down the good, the bad, and the ugly in state and national politics. And check out the Wednesday show. The Wednesday show with Cyril Micalenko. Yes, Cyril is a progressive columnist for the Bucks County Courier Times and the Intelligencer. He joins me to drill down into Bucks County, Pennsylvania, and international politics. And he also hops on our live stream to let me know that my mic's off. Thank you Cyril. Thank you Cyril. Well, you can get all our shows by subscribing to our podcasts on Podbean, iTunes, Spotify, wherever you get your podcasts. Want to remind you though, definitely tune in this Wednesday for the Wednesday show. As you know, Cyril has been covering a lot of the rise of extremists, extremism in Bucks County, covering the school board races. And his latest column is about those black flags that you may see flying, those black American flags you may see flying in your neighborhood, what that's all about. So we're gonna be talking about that and the results of the elections, because tomorrow is Election Day. So we'll be talking about the results of the elections on Wednesday. You can help support this show by becoming a patron for as little as five bucks a month. Just head on over to patreon.com/RCpress. And you can also help out the show right now by heading on over to our YouTube channel, if you're not there already. Smash that subscribe button, like the stream for this show, and hit that notification bell so we know every time, so you know every time we go live. And look, we're at almost at about 170 subs right now. We'd like to get it over 200 by the end of the month. I have modest goals. I have modest goals. I want to keep this community growing. Also make sure to check out our Discord server. That's in the show notes. Head on over our Discord server, sign up for that. We're gonna start building out that community a little bit too as well. And it's gonna be some place where we're gonna be talking about some future plans and continuing the conversation that we start, you know, with our podcast. And for more PA progressive talk, tune into the Rick Smith Show's livestream at 9:00 PM Eastern on his YouTube channel, Twitter, Facebook. And subscribe to his podcast, wherever you get your podcasts. Really, your best bet is just to head on over to ricksmithshow.com for all the latest across all his platforms. Like, you know, his show has been exploding right now. Show KPFK in Los Angeles, WBAI in New York. Of course, he's got the Saturday show on Free Speech TV. Man, they're just boom, go for it, Rick. And you have to check out Sisters of the Night Caucus podcast. The amazing PA women stirring the political cauldron behind this podcast rock the house. And they know where the bodies are buried. Yes, indeed. Make sure you follow them on Twitter and @thenightcaucus. That's @thenightcaucus on Twitter. And subscribe to their podcasts and anchor Spotify, iTunes, wherever you get your podcasts. And for all you gamers out there, The Game Inn, that's with two N's. The Game Inn is a Quikertown-based, black family-owned gaming store. They're friends of the show, and they've got everything from Reto N64s, latest consoles, video games for all platforms, collectibles, action figures, Funko Pops, you got it. And look, it's back to school time. Your kids get A's on their report cards? Send them over to The Game Inn. They'll get a discount on their purchases. Follow them on Twitter at @TheGameInn. That's @TheGameInn with two N's on Twitter. Check them out on their Facebook page. And look, if you're trying to, looking for something that's hard to find, you want to know if they got it in stock, shoot them an email at thegameinnpa@gmail.com. Special shout out, of course, goes to Jonathan Mann, who wrote our intro song, "There Are No People in the Future." Check out all his great stuff on his YouTube page and follow him on Twitter at @SongADayMan. That's with two N's, @SongADayMan on Twitter. We've got some great upcoming shows, everybody. Next Monday on the show, Kirsten Zolfo is gonna be back on the show. Yes, Kirsten Zolfo of the Bucks, Pennsylvania and Bucks County Indivisible. You've heard her on the show before. We've got a great show talking about Brian Fitzpatrick. Yes, that Janus-faced representative that we've got right here in the PA1. And we're gonna be talking about some of his latest antics, probably take a look back at the election. And then start looking ahead at the race that is really gonna be, well, it's becoming increasingly more important by the day. As we see the mutually reinforcing crises unfold. So that'll be next Monday, November 8th at 7:00 PM. And then in two weeks, I'm totally psyched about this, in two weeks, November 15th at 7:00 PM. Laura Putnam, the professor of history at the University of Pittsburgh, will be on the show. We're gonna be talking about the growing left progressive political movements in the Pittsburgh area. And we're gonna talk about her article, "Rust Belt in Transition." It's like, what happened to Pennsylvania's and the entire Rust Belt's middle suburb counties and how it can be reversed? It's a phenomenal article talking about this kind of like move away from the Democratic Party in these kind of like these Rust Belt middle suburb counties, as she's calling them. And why it is that in some of these very counties, we're seeing this resurgence of real kind of like left, even socialist politics, right? We could say something similar, but we see around the Buffalo region too as well, but we'll get there. So that's on Monday, November 15th. Laura Putnam, professor of history at University of Pittsburgh, will be on the show. But tonight, while you're here, right? While you're here, and tonight's Out to Coop Live, we're gonna be taking a look at the urgency of now. And as we know, it's COP21 gets underway in Glasgow, Scotland. That's the United Nations Conference on Climate Change. We are faced with perhaps the last best chance for a livable future as leaders of developed countries tamp down hopes for progress. It's like this push and pull and stuff. And tomorrow, of course, is Election Day, as I was saying, and we are faced with the crises of our school boards. As right-wing extremists have made a play to turn back the clock and reinvigorate white supremacy right in our own backyards. Yes, we are living in a time of high stakes, and we'll be taking your comments and calls on tonight's show. So I mean, I guess, you know, I guess the message is for tonight, well, I guess it's a couple of messages, I guess you should say. You know, last week, if you listen to the show last week, if you listen to any of the shows we did this week, it's like, I've gotta say, I've not been in the best headspace. When it comes to the news and even talking about on the show. And in part, that's because it's, you know, a combination of a little bit of exhaustion. It's a crunch time in my, you know, in my semester, because I teach at Kutztown University, as you know. But it's also seemed there's like this gap, right, between the stakes that we're facing. And the response, at least within the official political circles that we're seeing, right? And there's no bigger one than climate, right? I mean, the climate crisis is so real. Now, you know, at the, you know, back in, I think it was September, maybe the end of August, but I think it was September. The, you know, the IPCC, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change, right, that's that, you know, huge panel of scientists that basically gets together. They review all the scientific literature on climate change. And their job is to basically sum it up, right? In a scientific kind of direct way about what the findings show, right, what they are likely to yield, right? And to lay out basically all the data and all the analysis that policymakers would need to make a decision about what's happening with climate change. Now, the IPCC report is not a policy document, right? It is a scientific document that is designed to show trajectories, right? In 2018, they produced this report, which was, which a lot of folks thought was absolutely alarming, and because it was. And then last year, another report came up, and it was even more direct. This year, it's like they're like, you know, they're like trying to wave people down on the side of the road to tell them like, listen, you gotta pay attention, right? But the idea was, it's like, look, we have, the short version of it is, of course, and you know, many of you listen to this already know this. But, you know, we've got to like 2050 to basically get off fossil fuels, right? I mean, it's 30 years from now. That is not a lot of time. And the Paris Agreement, right, was an agreement that, you know, the latest global agreement about where, what we need to do with fossil fuel emissions. And the idea is we want to hold it down to 1.5 degrees of warming. The last, not this year's, but the last IPC received report, basically, I guess that was 2018, because I think it was like, basically said that, look, 1.5 degrees is where we have to be, two point, you know, because before then it was, you know, two degrees of warming. Two degrees of warming is gonna mean that we're actually gonna lose some island countries, right? Millions of people will be displaced. And the folks from the Global South were basically saying, look, this two-degree warming thing, this is, that might be convenient for you in the Western world, right? Might be convenient with you in North Atlantic nations, who have gotten us into this problem. But it is certainly not sufficient to save us, right? That was also true when you look at some of the impacts of warming was gonna have on places like India. Where there's projections that, you know, millions and millions of people could die because of excessive heat, right? So, you know, this is kind of like the alarm bells have been, have been sounded. And there's not a whole lot left to say about what needs to be done. There's only one thing that needs to be done, is that we need to get off fossil fuels, right? If you want to kind of move down from there, like number one, get off fossil fuels, like stop immediately. Which is going to require, of course, massive investments in that transition, right? Because it mean, as, you know, you don't need to be a Rhodes Scholar or something like that to know that if you switch off the fossil fuel tank. Well, unless you got something to replace it with pretty quickly, those lights go out, your cars don't work, all that kind of stuff. The economy crashes, right? So that in order to have this quick transition, what has been, what has basically been called a, you know, kind of, you need like a Marshall Plan for the world when it talks, when it's coming to getting off fossil fuels. That's really what we're looking at right here, right? We're looking at trying to get off fossil fuels ASAP. Well, the bad news is, of course, and I don't need to tell you this, but I'm gonna say it anyways. The bad news is, is that that's not happening. It's not happening fast enough. Matter of fact, we've seen kind of like carbon levels increase since the last COP, right, since the last report. We have seen new projections, right, via, it's come out multiple, multiple sources, like I've got like crazy amounts of stuff I've been reading. But multiple sources come out and say, basically, we're on a trajectory right now, not only to miss the 1.5 degrees of warming. But we're gonna miss the two point, or two degrees Celsius of warming. We're on a trajectory to do 2.7, I believe it is, 2.7 degrees of warming by the end of the century, right? So that's, that's their measure, right? And so what does that actually mean? Well, let's see. What that actually means, I'll give you this little sense, this is a piece that came out just today from the Financial Times, right? Not your big lefty journal, right? This is the Financial Times, the pink paper, right over there. So the subtitle, they have the "Climate Change Could Bring Near-Alivable Conditions for 3 Billion," that's with a B, "3 Billion People," say scientists. "Each degree of warming above present levels corresponds to roughly 1 billion people falling outside of what's called a climate niche." They'll say a little about this in a second. They say up to 2, 3 billion out of the projected, wait, up to 3 billion out of the projected world population of about 9 billion could be exposed to temperatures on par with the hottest parts of the Sahara by 2070, according to research by scientists from China, the US, and Europe. However, rapid reductions in greenhouse gas emissions could half the number of people exposed to such hot conditions. The good news, this is quote from one of the scientists, "The good news is that these impacts can be greatly reduced if humanity succeeds in curbing global warming," says study co-author Tim Linton, climate specialist and director of the Global Systems Initiative at Exeter University. All right, let me just say something about that, like first, right, first, 3 billion out of projected 9 billion, that's a third of the world's population could be living in areas as hot as the Sahara. You got that? Now, there's the other thing about the Sahara, right? Sahara's dry. Part of these projections, what they also show is that you're not talking about just having dry desert-like conditions. You're talking about bold temperatures, like in other words, like humidity levers and overall heat temperatures getting up so hot and humid that people cannot cool, their own bodies can't cool themselves, right? So you basically, let's, sorry to have to say it like this, but this is what it is, is that your body cooks itself because it can't get rid of the heat. If you read Kim Stanley Robinson's latest book, it's called like The Ministry of the Future. It begins, the beginning of the book starts in a scenario like that, right? In his book, you know, again, it's, you know, it's a sci-fi book, but it's, he's always been phenomenal on the science. And this is a near-future one. Is, that's what spurred some people to action, is that after like millions of people died in an event like that. And you wonder, is that where we're headed? I mean, we just passed this week, of course, was it 5 million people globally have died from the coronavirus? 600, or 750,000 people have died in the United States of the coronavirus? And seems like we barely bat an eyelash at that. 750,000 people. Gone. And it was preventable, right? That's not a, that's not a, that's not the kind of place you want to be, right? So they say this, right? So about a third of the population, 3 billion people could be living in those conditions. You know, and then you see this all the time in the mainstream media, right? And I understand where it's coming from, right? And you're gonna see this in some of what you're, the US is starting to say publicly too as well. We have this next paragraph, right, it says, "However, rapid reductions of greenhouse emissions could half the number." And right, you know, and I understand that, that idea that you want to, you want to leave out a bit of hope. And it's true, right? And what they say, you know, if you have, if you, if you, rapid reduction of greenhouse emissions could half the number of people. So let's be clear, you're still talking about 1.5 billion people by 2070. 1.5 billion people are gonna be living in areas as hot as the Sahara, based upon this analysis. And that is only if we have a rapid reduction in fossil fuel use. I mean, the stakes are unbelievable. So the report highlights how the majority of humans live in a very narrow mean annual temperature band, is what they call it. Between 11 degrees Celsius and 15 degrees Celsius, that's about between 52 degrees Fahrenheit and 59 degrees Fahrenheit. Researchers noted that despite all innovations and migrations, people had mostly lived in climate conditions like this, that mean temperature range, for several thousand years. Right? So for several thousand years, that's been where people have lived, right? We don't have a long record of living outside of that very, very narrow sliver, that climate niche, if you will. Here's a scientist again, says, quote, "This strikingly constant climate niche likely represents fundamental constraints on what humans need to survive and thrive," unquote, said Professor Martin Scheffer of Wageningen, Wageningen, I don't know, university, who coordinated research with his Chinese colleague, Chisu of Nanjing University. "Global warming has resulted in 1.1 degrees Celsius rise in temperatures since pre-industrial times, according to scientists. This is expected to reach 1.5 degrees within 20 years, even in the best-case scenario of deep cuts in greenhouse gas emissions." So remember, Paris Agreement said 1.5 degrees was what you're gonna try to stop at. What they're saying here, 20 years, that's not 2050, that's 2040. 2041, if you want to be specific, right? 1.5 degrees Celsius rise by then, if we do what's necessary, right? Even in the best-case scenario. So what do you do in this situation, right? I mean, this, this is the conundrum we're in, right? This is the, this is the, on the one hand, we have the, you know, look, and it's, it's the, it's the North Atlantic nations who are committed to this kind of neoliberal capitalist model of development. It's the rapidly expanding global factory that is China, right? It is the, the exploding populations of India, right, and their development models also burning coal, like China. And so here we are, right? We're at this moment when everything needs to be shut down. And you have to get all these disparate powers and, you know, people who are invested in a very different kind of economy. They're invested in a fossil fuel economy. And you need them to act in concert, and you need to act them quickly. It's not very, so anyways, that's why, if emissions continue, so listen, at present, only about 0.8% of the global land surface experiences mean annual temperatures greater than 29 degrees Celsius, right, or 84.2 degrees Fahrenheit, right? By 2070, right, that can move from 0.8% to 19% of the global. So think about what that means, right? So not only you're talking about landmass areas, that means this is, you know, you've, you've heard this before about these massive migrations, right? That will be happening as a result of what's going on with the climate. So what do we do here, right? I mean, this is, this is the thing. So I mean, what's happening in Glasgow, right? COP26 just got underway in Glasgow yesterday on Halloween, fitting, I guess. And already, you know, I've got this piece here, right? You know, this is from CNN. I'll just read you the, the opening paragraph, and this will give you a sense of it, right? "US climate envoy John Kerry and his team were hoping things would look very different heading into the world's premier climate summit this week. But officials have begun downplaying expectations as clouds gather over the upcoming talks. The circumstances have led the Biden administration officials to lower expectations for the Glasgow meeting, which they are messaging more as the beginning of a long process than as the culmination of Kerry's efforts over the last eight months." Quote, "Glasgow is an important milestone as we kick off what we're calling a decisive, I'm sorry, decisive decade of action to tackle the climate crisis," unquote, a senior administration official said this week. Quote, "And this will be an opportunity for us to lay down the foundation for further action, how we ratchet up our ambition in the upcoming years after Glasgow." Right? That's, I mean, I mean, it's almost comical, right? I mean, this is your launching point? This is your, as we're calling, where is it? What does it say that it's again? Is it the, the beginning of a long process? It's an important milestone as we kick off what we're calling this decade. I mean, look, you know, it's some, part of me like emphasize or empathizes with that kind of messaging, right? Because the last thing in the world you want to feel is that it's hopeless, right? I mean, you know, I mean, the best-case scenario, if we're looking at the best actors here, that, you know, that their hearts are in the right place, they're trying to do the right thing. They're messaging it such a way, they're trying to hold together something that's falling apart, right? And they're trying to kind of like hold out some hope that something is gonna be accomplished, right? But meanwhile, the science says otherwise, right? So this, you know, at begin, we're getting to start to see two colliding pathways, or I should say, three colliding pathways. And let me just like spell them out, right, here. There's, there's more, but you know, whatever. So the one pathway, right, is that we, some breakthrough happens, right? I don't know, some freaking Holy Spirit, you know, thing happens. And all these people at the summit, right, even though a whole lot of, a lot of folks from the Global South have been excluded from the summit due to COVID protocols, right? Because guess what? A lot of those countries that are gonna be the, on the front lines of climate change, don't have access to the vaccine, right? So, hey, looks like we're gonna do this again, right? So a lot of them were excluded, right? They couldn't even get like visas to get into the country. So any participation they have is remotely, right? So anyways, I'm getting off track. So let's just say there's some kind of Holy Spirit moment. And actually, you know, not only did these folks come out and say, "We've come to an agreement that we're gonna do this," but they actually somehow put in teeth, right? Miraculously, they come up with this like way to have, you know, give teeth. I mean, I don't know how you do that, right? But that's like, you know, that's the best-case scenario. That's what everybody really, I mean, I think everybody would love, right? If we actually just do this right. And, and, and quit the nonsense, let's freaking listen to what we gotta do, because we got a crisis here. Let's respond to it like a crisis and pull together and do this, right? That, like, what I just described there is like right on the borderland of like the forest where unicorns are real, okay? Just want to be clear. I know, right, that. So, but there's a second line, right? So I guess there's four. The second line is, we continue the process as it is. The slow process, we're gonna kick off, you know, a decade of blah, blah, blah. And it's gonna be a decade of the same nonsense, right? And the only thing in that framework that is gonna spur action is going to be shocks, disasters, mass deaths, all at once, right? And at some point, you think, okay, then, 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 then they feel like they're back into a corner, so they absolutely have to respond. So that's another possibility. That's not quite on the, you know, the edge of unicorn land. That's a little bit farther in, but I think a little bit more realistic. But then, of course, you've got what we saw just happen with the, with the pandemic. Is that the ability of people to allow other people to die as long as it's not them, or as long as it fits some sort of weird fricking cult-like devotion to death. Right? That's why Sean Kitchen always said, "Republican Party's become a death cult." Hey, Shereen, what's up? So, you know, I'm not, you know, there's, there's not, there's not evidence, let's put it like this. There's not existing evidence to say that even in the absent, or even in the presence of massive deaths as related to climate, or disasters related to climate, that we're gonna see action, right? The one thing that might play itself out is like, you know, again, because like rich people are gonna be insulated, we know this. It's only if there's gonna be impacts, and hard impacts that are gonna hit the financial sectors and are gonna hit the kind of, you know, the wealth sectors. And, you know, that's, that's gonna be part of it. So that's one trajectory. So that's number two. Number three is radical action from below, right? This means that we start exercising our power to say no. We will say, we are going to not allow this economy to function. We are going to do the general strikes until there's climate action. You want your riches? You want your production? Guess what? We're gonna say no. We might produce for ourselves and for each other, but we're not producing for you. Rick Smith has always said this, right? One of the most powerful, one of the greatest powers of the worker, right? Is to stick their hands in the pockets and say no collectively. That's, that's the pathway, that's the progressive, the left pathway. And, you know, I hesitate to even say left at this point, because I mean, that's the kind of human pathway, right? That's the one where, like, that's not even a read of the ideology of like what that means and where we go from there. That's just a kind of a sense of like, how we demand action is that we say no. We don't work. You know, this is what the, you know, the, the longshoremen have done over and over again, who offload all those ships coming from China and stuff, right? They basically come out and they say, "Look, we're not, we're going on strike. We're not, we're not, we're not unloading your ships until we get X, Y, and Z met." And that's because they said no. That's a nonviolent action. It's, it's, it's confrontational. It's full of conflict. It's got risk associated with it. But it's one that is a better chance of succeeding than hoping for the best. And, you know, and, and again, look, we, we don't have movements in this country at least. That's not the case in other places around the world. But in this country at least, we don't have a, like a lot of like, you know, like muscle memory of building mass movements. Words, we're still stuck, right? Especially like liberals and the left, like more broadly are, are still like hesitant to make people uncomfortable. I, I don't even talk and getting in people's faces. I'm just saying like the discomfort in your social circles of saying no with your bosses, right? I mean, I could go off on a whole other trajectory about what we saw, like, you know, at Kutztown University, when it came to its responses to the pandemic and responsive to what they're doing to Steve Oros and other people at our, our campus right now. And the, the, the willingness for people to just like, okay, to not fight, to not even put on the table a refusal to work. Unless our conditions are safe, we will not go back to work to collectively. Cause you know, if I did it individually, or that person did it individually, or that person did it individually, they're gone. It's easy to pick off individuals. You have to do it collectively. You have to plan, you have to strategize, and that's where you get your power from, right? That's where solidarity comes from. Solidarity is that energy that helps exercise those muscles and keep you strong. And that's the kind of thing that has to happen in our workplaces. That's the kind of thing that happens in our communities. We have to say no. And to take away the very thing that they want the most, and that is the money. Cause that's all they care about, the money and the power. So, you know, we've had this history of like looking back at different movements, right? Whether it's the kind of like women's suffrage movement, whether it's the, you know, the, the, uh, the anti-slavery movement, whether it's the civil rights movement, right? Whether it's a struggle for LBGDQ rights, whether it's the feminist movement. As kind of like, look at what they did. And we have pictures of them sitting down and locking arms and, and like, and we champion that when it's in the past. We have to bring that all forward to the now and let it bolster us now in this fight. Because like literally our lives and our children's lives are on the line when it comes to climate crisis. And the fact that like, I look, I think about my place of work, right? Kutztown University, the fact you have all these buildings with big flat tops exposed to the sun all day, that those are not packed with solar panels? That should be enough right there. No solar panels, no classes. How's that? Right? I mean, seriously. I mean, at some level it is that easy. And I understand in practice, I understand the feelings around it. I understand the hesitancy. I understand this fear. But that is what we're facing here. I mean, cause like, what's the alternative, right? How many billions of people are going to be displaced? How many people will we accept as dead before general strikes start to feel like common sense? I mean, I honestly don't know what that tipping point is. I have no idea. I, I thought, there was, there was one time, I think several years ago, before the Trump era, that I, I had, I had a feeling about what that looked like and what people, what was people's breaking point? I mean, I thought, boy, was I wrong. Boy, was I wrong. I mean, what we've just been through in the Trump regime has, was just, is, it, I mean, I don't know about you. I know for me, certainly it, it, it ripped me up. I mean, there's enough struggles in our lives as it is with that. Holy crap. The brutality, they just, the, the lies, the, the, the gaslighting every single day that took place. Right? And, and I, look, it was our first, it was our, well, I shouldn't say it's our first. But it was for many of us, it was our first experience with that degree of authoritarianism, right? The really like, this is what like it means to live under a authoritarian regime. I think for a lot of us, it was abstract. This was real. So that's what I'm thinking. So that's something. So then we have a fourth round. So then we've got your general strikes, your mass movement, right? Your solidarity, your kind of, this is what we do. We make, we demand action. We put our bodies on the line. The fourth one scares the crap out of me. And we've already seen these, these, you know, snippets of this development happening. And I'll tell you right now, this is already happening on the far right circles. You get in their chat rooms, you follow, you follow what's hap-. I mean, I'm not suggesting you do this, right? There's plenty of people who do that research to read it. You don't need to go out and get into their chat rooms because it is like disturbing. I couldn't handle it too long, right? When I tried to do that one, I was like, oh my God, I can't do this. It's, that third one has to do with, okay, what happens? So we stay on this trajectory. The climate heats up. More disasters start happening. A billion, let's just say, you know, let's say, let's be conservative in our estimates. 500 million people to start are forced to flee their, their homes. I don't know, migrating. Where do they go? Who lets them in? We've already seen the rise of some political parties that have been, um, I talked about this a little bit on the show last week, but some political parties that, um, have started to pair nationalism, right wing nationalism with climate action. If you remember, there was this shooting in New Zealand, right? That mass shooting in New Zealand. The worst shootings in New Zealand's history, mass shooting, mass killings. And one of the, uh, in that manifesto was left behind, one of the things they found was like this whole environmental fascism. That pairing of nationalism with climate action. Basically saying, we are going to protect ourselves. We're going to build our walls around this and we're going to keep everyone else out. And we're gonna double down on nationalism and borders. And it's just like, it's us against them. Right? That's kind of a trajectory. That is not a fanciful, uh, fanciful one. It's one that is on the realm of possibilities, especially if you see these, these, what are now fairly fringe arguments between nationalism or, you know, on the right. But increasingly there's these experiments that are going on at different, different countries. I want to say one was in Denmark. I wish I could just pull that up. I was, I was hoping I had, I thought I had it right here in my, uh, in my pile of stuff, but, uh, I don't. That's scary. Because what it does is it, is it basically takes a component of what we already have, right? You think about this country, for example. Like, if you think of this, it's going to be like, you know, who's the us and them in this country? Right? It's not like all Americans. It's never been all Americans, right? It's going to be those rich folks paired with their white supremacist thugs and their police and military things, especially the police forces, right? That have been militarized. Right? They're going to draw the boundaries and the walls, put the walls around their areas, which they care about. The rest of us be damned. You know, I, I talked about this on the show like, uh, a lot, kind of a while ago now. I mean, it's been a while ago, but I, you know, said, you know, it's, it's the, it's the zombie model, right? I mean, the, the way that these people perceive, say, that kind of mass migration, the way that they perceive us, right? If we have to flee. To them, the rich, the white supremacists, the folks that are kind of like, you know, with the, you know, militarized police, the blue lives matter people, all that stuff, they see us as the zombies. We are the hordes that are trying to get in the compound. Right? It disturbs the hell out of me is that I can't tell you how many ads I get, you know, on my phone or on my Twitter scroll account or whatever. I don't even play video games with that guilt. He's like, you know, like, so again, you scroll all the stuff and there's like all these zombie killing games, right? You know, you see like you are, your, your lens, right? You are in, put in the position of the one who has to push back on the zombies. All those people like trying to scale the walls and get into this, right? I mean, dystopian, like, you know, sci-fi is built around these, these, these tropes too as well. Well, but in most of those movies or in those games, you're asked to put yourself on the inside of the compound, right? In reality, the vast majority of us are on the outside of the compound. And they'll call us zombies. They'll call us whatever, whatever they need to do in order to separate us out. How do we know this? Well, because we've done it before, right? It is built into the genetic code of this country, right? The genocide of the kind of like indigenous peoples of this country, right? Slavery, hundreds of years of slavery, the us versus them. Heather McGee's got a great book called The Sum of Us, who goes through some of this, some of this logic as it's kind of built into American ideology. Right? What it means in a very practice, right? The way that she talks about it is that, look, it's the, we've been told it's the kind of like, it's the, uh, it, it's the, it's the, uh, what does she call it? She, you know, it's basically like, you know, it's the, um, zero sum game. Yeah, sorry, I couldn't pull it up. It's like a zero sum game, right? If, 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 if this group over here gets something, it must be taking it from me. Right? That has been a, a logic that has been racialized and has been utilized and deployed by the people in power as a way to kind of split and separate people out. She goes through, does a great job historically of actually breaking down where this is actually legislated, particularly in Virginia. Like, I didn't know. I think I talked about this on the show once too. I had no idea that there was a period, there was a period, I forget when, I wanted to say 17, no, it was probably 1600s or before the, uh, um, uh, War of Independence, where white indentured servants and servitans and white and poor white folks banded together with, 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 with enslaved blacks, right? And rose up against the power structure and burnt Richmond to the ground. Right? I have no idea. Like it's just like, what, right? And that actually happened in our history, right? And so what did they do afterwards? One of the first things they did, they learned from it. The people in power learned from that. And then after that, they started writing into law. I'm going to give these white people, these poor white people, a little bit of cultural capital over and some material things, very small material things to show that, so that they can feel that they're better than those black folks. And they started legislating this stuff over time. Right? So that's built into our code here, right? In terms of as an option, doesn't mean that we're, you know, this isn't kind of like a genetic determinism thing. That's more like, that's the option. That's a trajectory that's built into our cultural narratives, right? So they will do that. They will play the zombie game with us, right? That is the environmental fascism part of this stuff, which we've got to kind of address. So those are my concerns, right? So now, you know, I do have to say that, you know, what you saw with the, the Biden's package about the latest spending bill, about $555 billion. It's not nearly enough, um, but it's better than I first thought, which is, which is a good thing. I listened to say Bill, Bill McKibben on, uh, he was on Rachel Maddow last week. And, uh, kind of like talked me down off my ledge a little bit, but basically, because they basically squared with kind of like, I think where I was thinking about this is like, look, it is significant what's in that bill if it ever passes. However, it's not nearly enough, right? So it is a good thing. It is the largest investment in that kind of history. But the problem is, is that it just leaves all the incentives and takes away the stick, gives all the carrots and no stick. So there's no penalties for breaking away from that. There's no penalties to continue to use fossil fuels, right? It's just kind of encouraging people, right? Which, you know, again, fan. And one of the biggest things that, you know, was kind of left out of it, um, was this, uh, God, where was that one thing? These lights, Featherstone's piece. Yeah, here it is. This thing, it was all the clean, uh, electricity, electricity payment program. Basically would have had these direct incentives, but also would have had a stick connected with it. That was considered to be the hallmark piece of the, uh, of Biden's Build Back Better bill that would have been jumpstarted a whole bunch of stuff when it comes to, uh, the response to climate. And, uh, uh, that was taken out. So Bill McKibben was kind of pointing about that. So, look, I mean, I, I, you know, I, I didn't even need to go this far on the climate stuff, um, tonight. But it's like, that's, it's really, really significant towards where we go next. Um, but we're going to be covering this because the, you know, COP goes on, I think for two weeks. So we're going to be, um, looking at some of that. We're going to have some people on that, um, I've already reached out to some folks who are, uh, want to come on and talk about some of the stuff in climate right here in Pennsylvania and so on. So you're going to get a lot of that in the, um, kind of leading up for the next couple of months. So just be aware of that. Um, so I won't spoil the surprise of who we got coming on, but, um, what was it there? So tonight is like the big night, right? I mean, tonight is the eve of election day. And, um, we have some high stakes elections tomorrow, right? Now Cyril Micalaco has been covering like, like nobody's business, has been covering what's been going on in Bucks County, um, has been highlighting the, uh, the school board candidates that you need to get out and vote for, and to show you why that you want to vote for some of the other ones. I mean, like we've seen, like, you know, like you, 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 you've got people like Ricky Chaykin, right? You know, you got people like, I mean, I, I just could go down the list, but you've got these people on the Republican ticket. Let's just leave it like this. This makes it nice and simple. The people who are running on the Republican ticket have wholesale bought into a whole range of conspiracy theories, like anti-maskling, like, like trumped up racist CRT nonsense. And have been hanging out in the same room with, you know, the QAnon conspiracy theorist people. Right? They're kind of like all in this together, right? And so I'm looking at here, as you know, I'm in the Penridge School District, right? Um, and the Penridge School District is one of the, has been one of the, uh, leaders in, uh, one of the leaders in, in fanning the flames of extremism, right? And, you know, I came across this, uh, this, one of these groups, there's a Steve W. I'll just leave it to Steve W. because this was how I signed the thing. This is, uh, he said, this is a closing argument for the Penridd United. And I think it's worth, I think it's worth reading this, right? This is coming from somebody who got involved, um, and what they think about this. So I'm just going to read it in its entirety. So Steve W. says, "I got dragged into this campaign kicking and screaming. I had opinions, sure, but my intention was to share them privately. I thought, and in fact, I do little more than complain and meme up a Facebook group with like-minded local yokels. You know the rest. Not quite eight weeks later, I've done more in support of Jeremiah Link, David O'Donnell, Dawn Curran, Adrienne, Adrienne King and Carolyn Para Ciarrino, AKA Term Locks, than I've ever done from any one candidate in any race at any level. I've donated, I've attended fundraisers, I've canvassed, I've text banked, I've published an op ed, I've drummed up support for the community, or I tried hard to anyway. I planted a four by four foot sign loud and proud in my yard facing 113. I did these things for a reason. The reason is I'm in awe of the sacrifices these five have made of time, money and sleep. They've put their family names and reputations on the line. They've been tested in ways that might cause us, uh, many of us to crumble. Still, they run. Still, they show up. Still, they give the whole of the Penridge School District the benefit of the doubt. If that isn't a testament to their qualifications, stamina and fortitude, I really don't know what is. If you, a voter, are still on the fence about your next five school board directors and remember nothing else about this race, please remember this. The entire premise of the opposition campaign is based on falsehood. Penridd United doesn't want critical race theory in the schools, nor was it about to be implemented, nor was it ever even considered. That soundbait, soundbite is a scare tactic fed by interest outside of our district. It is the lowest form of conspiracy theory that insinuates our own teachers, who already have one of the toughest jobs in the world, are somehow complicit in some seedy liberal indoctrination campaign. Meanwhile, our nine to zero incumbent partisan school board stands by and allows such a lie to be propagated while taking zero responsibility for the awful environment our kids are legally required to show up to every day and the corral of tanking rank, uh, tanking rankings. Enough is enough. The words, "We take responsibility," appear on the official, the other group, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, the official Penridd United Facebook page. Those words do not, and I wager they will never appear on any page affiliated with their opponents, even as their henchmen attack small businesses and post fabrications of conspiracy theories as official public policy. Vote at the ballot box tomorrow. Vote. I thought that was fantastic. I thought that was. I thought that was absolutely fantastic. I want to read one more thing. This is a letter to the editor. It's a letter to the editor by an eleven year old. And I'm going to read it to you. This has appeared in the, um, the Reporter Online. That's what I got, the media news group. Hello, my name is Logan Phillips. I'm a Penridge student. I attended Siler Elementary last year, and I'm currently in the sixth grade at Penridge Central Middle School. Has been so much talk from adults in our community about what's going on in our schools and being taught to our children. You're talking about me, so I think you need to hear from me. Inaccurate information is being purposely spread by the Penridge GOP, BBCC, these are the, the, the right wing Republican school board candidates, the BBCC school board candidates, and some current school board members. Through Facebook, school board meetings, letters mailed to our homes, and candidates knocking on our doors all over town stating things that are absolutely positively not true. They want to be leaders in our community, make rules for my school, and are supposed to help me. But they are trying to get elected and making changes to our schools by tricking people. How can this really be happening? They sent a letter claiming I was taught at school all these ridiculous things. That one, I have never been taught at school that I am defined by my race. I have never been taught I am an oppressor. I have never been taught to question my gender. That's completely ridiculous. I have never been taught America is the problem. Okay, that one I really don't get. We certainly, as Americans, always try to be better and can't pretend we are perfect. If that's what they meant, I really don't know about that one. And I've never been taught to focus on race instead of character. Did you know Siler is nationally recognized as a school of character? I didn't see that in the letter that was trying to scare parents into protecting us by lying to them. My brother is an eighth grader and obviously was never taught any of his, any of this at his school either. He said the only thing he's heard or seen that's different lately is kids getting picked on way more this year. So now, due to misinformation spread, DEI is a code word for evil? Look it up, grownups. Inclusion doesn't mean exclude others when we include. It means include everyone. I'm going to say it one more time. We have never been taught these things in school. I'm well aware people who have been misinformed or want to continue the lie are going to say that I've been politically indoctrinated. I did have to do some research to find out what the heck the word meant. It's absurd. A bunch of grownups temporarily halted DEI and took some educational books out of our schools. You sounded the alarm, alright. The imaginary CRT one. Let me assure you, I do know about many of these topics as I love to read and learn about what's going on in the world. My parents, dad is very Republican, mom's an independent. My parents will question my answers, or will answer my questions. I'm not sheltered from the world I will someday be working in. I just didn't learn about them in school, ever. Sadly, all this ridiculous, ridiculous sounding of the alarms has only brought bad behavior into my school and my town. Please look into the candidates running for school board and vote. Please don't listen to the candidates that are indoctrinating the adults of my community. What they are saying is not true. Unfortunately, I can't vote, but I can tell you the truth about what is and isn't going on in Penridge Schools. Please vote to bring kindness back to our schools. Logan Phillips, eleven year old. This kid has got more sense than these freaking right wing lunatics running our school board right now. That's why in the Penridge School District, you got to get out and vote for the Penridge United candidates tomorrow. It's as simple as that. I've already handed my ballot, if I already handed it, that's awesome. Right? But you want to make sure. You want to make sure that you're voting for Don Curran. That you're voting for Adrian King. That you're voting for David O'Donnell. That you're voting for Jeremiah Link. And you're voting for Carolyn Para Ciarrino. And you've heard four out of five of those candidates on this show. We've had them on this show. Likewise, you've heard our shows when we've had, uh, candidates from the, uh, Palisades School Board, our school district, facing the same things. Racist attacks, lies about CRT, anti-masking craziness. You want to make sure that you're going to be voting for the right folks there too as well. You're in the Palisades School District? Look, I'm not even asking, I'm not even asking you to like the Democratic Party, but you need to vote Democrat this time. You need to vote for Jamie Davis, the Palisades. Yep. There's a lot at stake, you know, as in, as in our, in our community. Right now. There's a lot at stake. And, uh, I just, I'm sorry, I didn't say, make sure your Palisades School District, make sure you're voting for Jamie Davis, and make sure you're voting for Cindy Shane. Make sure that you're voting for those two. And if you have questions about them, you can check out, they were on our show. They were on our show two weeks ago. We had them on here, and they're telling you the same thing. You're talking about highly qualified people who have the best, who've like been given it in the volunteer realm of things. You have like Cindy Shane, for example, up in the Palisades, you know, she's been working with, uh, uh, she's worked with at-risk kids and disabled students. She knows what those kids need, and that's watching this, this, this craziness going on around her. Jamie Davis has been out there kind of giving it all for those kids and kind of making sure that, say, students of color also have a voice there too as well, standing up for kids and being an advocate. You got to vote for those folks. When you're looking at the Central Bucks School District, you got to make sure you're voting for the Democrats in that race too as well, and you're not voting for the crazies. So there's been some, um, there's been some talk about this now, and I'm very glad to see this is making some of the national media for the first time. Um, but what you got to understand about this too as well is that this is, this is a test run. What we're seeing right now in the, in the school boards, right, is test run. There's a reason why this is happening statewide. There's a reason why this is happening across the country. Is because these right wing Republicans believe that like they, they've got no win on economic argument. Everything in Biden's Build Back Better, Build Back Better program, it polls, right, at like anywhere between like fifty-five and, and like eighty-five percent in support, depending on where you are. Even in like some of the most conservative areas of the country, where you're talking about the job programs and everything like this. You're talking about, you know, uh, expanding of kind of Medicaid and Medicare. You're talking about, um, being able to negotiate over prescription drug prices. All of this got stripped out by people like Manchin and stuff like this, right? Even though they were all for it. So the Republicans know that they're not going to win on the economic level. Right? They're not going to win on the insurrection level, right? Unless you're a Trumper, right? But Trump's got a hard cap. So what are you going to do? You're going to scare people with culture wars. And they've actually shown this. This was a story about Virginia. What's going on in Virginia right now, um, in, uh, in the governor's race, right? Tight, tight race, and they found that Republicans in Virginia found out that, yep, sure enough, that even in some of these areas that went for, uh, went for Biden, or actually vote for Terry McAuliffe last time around, and won by nearly twenty percentage points. Once they started talking about critical race theory, once they started talking about anti-masking stuff, they were able to cut into that lead. Now, they're never going to lead, like, win some of those counties, like down in Alexandria, Loudoun County, things like, they're not going to win them. But they're going to cut into the margins, and that's what they're after. And they've been noticing that in places like Bucks County. This is why, you know, we've talked about this on the show before too as well. In Bucks County, it's one of, it's not the kind of like, you know, the major, it's not, it's not in the big rural districts, right? It's a districts like Bucks County where you see that's been primarily white, and we're seeing some demographic change. And then there's economic pressures that are happening nationally. That's where we see that this stuff takes hold. The culture war stuff, the scare the parents stuff, that's where Republicans have found a foothold, and that's what they're going to run. And then after tomorrow, they're going to assess what happens in these races. And if they find that they were able to win all these races by trumping up this nonsense, these sheer lies that a freaking eleven year old says, can tell us. If they find they're going to win, they're going to, they're going to double down on it. So you can expect this to happen in 2022, because that's really what they care about at the national level. Right? Now, you may have seen this, right? Seen this guy? You know who that is? That's Paul Martino. I wanted to, somebody shot this to me earlier today, and I want to give them a plug, because you definitely should be signing up for this on Substack too as well. This is a Substack by noneofthisisnormal.substack.com, right? None of this is normal, uh, none of this is normal is one word, right? Noneofthisisnormal.substack.com. And, um, this is the, the one thing I want to make sure that we've got, because, look, this is what's going to happen November third. November second, the election, right? We got to make sure that if you haven't voted already, you want to get out and vote, you want to get as many other people out there into vote as you can. Right? Sound the alarm to get out the vote. Like, these other people are sounding the alarm about nonsense and lies. We have to sound the alarm. Look, the extremists are coming and they're taking it. This is what they're doing. And here's the evidence. We all got it. But this guy, Paul Martino, right, who got, I couldn't freaking believe the Inquirer gave him this, this, this heading of like, you know, a concerned dad, right? Spends like hundreds of thousands of dollars on school board races because he's concerned. No! This guy's a right wing operative, right? Who's got a ton of money, right? So I was going to read you this, the beginning of this, uh, this, this, none of this is normal, right? Um, and again, this is going to echo what you heard from Jordan Hopkins on this, on this program, um, last week, when Jordan was on the show, right? It's going to echo what you hear Cyril Micalaco reporting on, right, in his column, The Courier Times, Bucks County Courier Times, The Intelligencer. Right? So, and here we go with someone else, right? Um, this is a, and I say, this is a really good, um, I'll put a link, I'll try to remember to put a link to this too in today's show notes. But just look it up, Substack, noneofthisisnormal.substack.com. He's got this, uh, latest piece, "The Real Reason Paul Martino Was Pumping Money Into The School Board Races. His buddies, The Koch Brothers, Want To Defund Public Schools," right? Exactly what we've been talking about on this, on this program. So I'll read you a bit from this. So Paul Martino isn't running for school board in Central Bucks where he lives, or anywhere else. But he's paying out a boatload of money to a candidates, to candidates who are. At this point, his tab is reaching nearly $600,000. He's pumping $600,000 into school board races. The question is why. Martino claims that his original motivation was to keep schools open so kids could get a quality in-person education. Well, schools are open. And they have been. So where's his real, what's his real motivation? Well, Martino was far from just an angry dad with deep pockets. His move, he moves in circles with the super rich and super powerful, and Martino has an agenda. Martino is laying the groundwork for schools to fail. Does that sound extreme? Well, follow along as we build this out. Check out this quote from Martino from a report on WHYY this morning. Quote, "What we have found time and again is that most of the schools were closed at the beginning of the last calendar year, not actually because of COVID, indirectly because of COVID, of course, but because of administrative errors," said Martino, who lives in the Central Bucks School District. Quote, "You didn't hire enough teachers. You weren't prepared for this contingency. You didn't insert the new air filters. The eighty, the eight-time company founder, CEO, coach, and it was like, whoa, wow, this is my kids at stake here. Like, that's not good enough for my kids," unquote. So what is he saying? Schools did a bad job. Administrators are incompetent. Only innovators like me know how to fix this. The guys made all this money in Silicon Valley. And you heard me talk about that Silicon Valley mentality. That's what they do. They want to disrupt things. They want to, they want to destroy them. What we know about Martino is this. He spoke to a Coke event in 2016. He has strong ties to Project Veritas. That's right, that's kind of like right wing, far right propaganda, people that lie about stuff and create videos to try to sink progressive organizations. That's the organization that attempted to delegitimize the 2020 election, and Martino told Vice that he considers himself a mentor to Veritas co-founder James O'Keefe. And he's a donor to the Federal Society, the lobbying organization that has appointed itself the Republican gatekeeper for judicial appointees who will be more likely to align big money donors' interests. Last month, Martino was featured speaker at the Culture, Religion, and Technology Conference in Miami, where he shared the stage with controversial libertarian and tech investor Peter Thiel. Peter Thiel, Peter Thiel is widely seen as the heir to the Koch Brothers circle of influence and conservative politics. Thiel has published, has publicly stated, quote, "I no longer believe that freedom and democracy are compatible." Right? So I'm going to put a link in the show notes. I'm not going to read it all to you right now, but this is the kind of stuff that, that we need to be seeing more of. Right? And this is, and I'm going to do what I can to kind of like, you know, push this out, because look, like I said, the day after the election, everything right now is about getting people out to vote for that election tomorrow, making sure that those school board candidates on the far right are defeated soundly. Making sure that the Penridge United candidates in the Penridge District, the Democratic candidates, um, for school board in the other districts like Central Bucks, like, oh God, Council Rock is a mess, um, in Palisades, right, East Penn, you make sure that if there's a candidate up for election, you make sure the sane person is elected tomorrow. And then on November third, on Wednesday, this is what we need to start planning about. I've already heard some people saying that you want to start to get there and start planning. I'm in. We're in for the long haul. I want media Avengers, if you will. Who want to join forces here. Like, okay, look, my little sphere, like here, Raging Chicken, like our little podcast, right? We have a kind of a built out, we have a website that, you know, we used to write a lot of stuff on. We want to start being consolidating some of that stuff. If you want to be, kind of join the media Avengers and, and join this organization as a way to kind of like do this kind of reporting, right, in a centralized way, and way that we can start kind of like having an influence on there, you let me know. ragingchickenpress@gmail.com. Join our Discord. Right? Make sure you subscribe to this YouTube channel. Make sure that you share it out. Make sure you like this stream to help keep this promoting. Right? We can strategize together. This is what we got to do. And I'm going to be talking about this a lot on our Patreon channel, but I wanted to say it out here tonight because I don't want it to be limited only to patrons. Right? Which you, by the way, you can become a patron for this show, because, go onto patreon.com/rcpress and become a patron for those five bucks a month. So when you talk about this on Patreon channel, we're going to talk about this in some of our closed Discord channels. Right? About how we begin to strategize about building out a media movement right here in Bucks County. And beyond. But Bucks County to start, because we need to start having, thinking about how we can have a direct impact. And how we can assist those people that are doing the freaking amazing work on the ground of going out and knocking door to door. There's a reason why we say, let's keep the media and the movement, the movement and the media. There has been no successful social movement ever that has not had a media wing. It's changed over time, obviously. Based upon context, based upon culture, you've had some sort of communication structure that has assisted those movements. We can help that here. So anyways, everybody, thank you for kind of joining me in today. I know I went a little longer than I wanted to. Thank you, uh, for the support that you always, you always show. Um, I want to support, you know, I, I want to give another shout out to Jordy Three, who actually became a patron over on our Podbean channel, because that's where we kind of, you know, that's where our podcast runs and stuff like this. And if you're on, if you're on Podbean and you listen to this regular on the Podbean app, you can hit that little kind of like patron button, that big green patron button at the top. And you can become, you can, again, you can help support this show, become a patron over on Podbean too as well for five bucks a month. But can you imagine what we could do, the influence that we can have, the kind of, the ways that we can help support these movements if we had more people working on this? I'll tell you, when, when we, uh, when Raging Chicken was primarily a, um, a, uh, kind of a left journalist space, right, where we did investigative research and kind of like, uh, stuff like this, we had some, we were able to see what that impact looked like. Right? When Sean Kitchen was writing full time, when we had, you know, people like, um, Wendy up at Bloomberg was writing for us, we had, you know, a bunch of folks, um, kind of, kind of in and out that had been doing on some of the reporting, we were able to kind of see our direct impact. Right? We were able to kind of push local issues to a state level and a national level. Right? We had stories being picked up on, kind of, uh, our stories picked up on Mother Jones, uh, Rachel Maddow Show, got a, gave us a shout out a couple of different times. Right? We were able to do that because we had a kind of a group of people with concerted effort, was directed to kind of get and kind of do this kind of reporting that we're seeing here in this kind of like, you know, this is not normal, substack.com, what Cyril's doing over there in his column at the Bucks County Courier Times. There's good people out there. And I got to say, I, I'm very, very heartened by what I've been seeing in, uh, the parents organizations in my school district and kind of around, around the area, around through Bucks County, around the state. The organizing has been great, you know, and I, and I do want to say, before we call it off tonight, um, I wanted, I was reminded, uh, by Liza Featherstone, I don't know if you know her, um, she's a great writer, she writes over at- by Liza Featherstone. I don't know if you know her. Um, she's a great writer. She writes over at, um, New Republic. Um, but I, I first remember Liza Featherstone was her involvement with the Students Against Sweatshops years ago. And, uh, her writing back then was, was absolutely fantastic, and it's continued to be, and it's so great to see her still working in the movement. But, um, she was talking about, particularly about climate change, right? And she was talking about, you know, this, the sense of cynicism, or we're going to lose this, or, you know, you know, what's the correct strategies and tactics and all this kind of stuff. Right? You know, the question, are we doing it right? It's blah, blah, blah. And this is, this is, I want to lead, kind of close out with her message here. And it's good for all of us to remember this, right, as we, we're going to need, um, that fuel to help us all keep going, right? So history's lesson? This is Liza Featherstone now. Don't give up. As Angela Davis has pointed out, imagine being an abolitionist in 1850, the year of the Fugitive Slave Act, which mobilized the entire federal and state apparatus to capture enslaved people attempting to escape. Anti-slavery activists faced this staggering political defeat that year, yet most of them would then live to see the passage of the 13th Amendment abolishing slavery in the United States in 1865. Similarly, Jean Theo Harris, a Brooklyn College professor and author of The Rebellious Life of Mrs. Rosa Parks, in the 1950s, when Rosa Parks was actively organizing, there was, quote, "no sign that she was going to see change in her lifetime," unquote. In 1955, just months before Parks famously refused to give up her seat in a Montgomery bus, the men responsible for the death of 14-year-old Emmett Till, a child brutally murdered for supposedly flirting with a white woman, were acquitted. Parks and others worked for years to challenge the unjust conviction of Jeremiah Reeves, a black teenager sentenced to death for the alleged rape of a white woman. He said the relationship was consensual, but Reeves was executed in 1957. Years later, Parks said of the time, quote, "Sometimes it was very difficult to keep going when all of our work seemed to be in vain," unquote. She could not have anticipated that her own organizing would, within a decade, help end Jim Crow and pass the Voting Rights and Fair Housing Acts. "This moment looks bleak," said Theo Harris, "but we could be on the cusp of change," quote. Some will worry about the political optics of tactics like blocking traffic or blowing up pipelines, I'm not, but such specifics may be beside the point. Theo Harris, also the author of A More Beautiful and Terrible History: The Uses and Misuses of Civil Rights History, notes that some myths about the civil rights movement muddle our understanding of that time, in turn, warping our analysis of contemporary activism. One of these myths, she says, is the, quote, "idea that there is a right way," unquote, "to protest." In recent years, centrists and conservatives have often held up the nonviolence of Rosa Parks or Martin Luther King Jr. as the, quote-unquote, "correct persuasive strategy." In contrast to Black Lives Matter protesters who have sometimes been criticized for confrontations with the police. Yet that elides the more complex history of the civil rights movement. "A related myth," Theo Harris told me, "is that, quote, 'if you shine a light on the injustice in the United States, it will be remedied, and that's just not true,' unquote." These narratives, Theo Harris explained, quote, "distort how change happens and why it happens," unquote. The grade school understanding of history mistakenly elevates discrete tactics and flashpoints. The history of a successful movement is messier and perhaps more boring and repetitive than common narrative suggests. Quote, "We don't tell it as a story of perseverance," unquote, said Theo Harris, "and we should." Parks didn't succeed because of her quiet dignity and refusing to get off the bus that one day in 1955, but because Claudette Colwin and many other Black Montgomery activists had protested before her, and because Parks herself had been organizing for years. Change comes because people keep trying. The idea that a sign of insanity is doing the same thing over and over, Theo Harris laughed, is just a stupid cliche. In fact, the history of organizing shows that what works is, quote, "having the fortitude to keep doing it," unquote. It wasn't that Rosa Parks that happened to engage in the right protest on that one day. Quote, "Parks's genius," Theo Harris emphasized, "was her ability to act and act again." And that's where we're at. And I think the title of her piece, which says it all, says, "The Climate Fight Will Seem Impossible Until Its Sudden Victory." Right? We've heard that. Change is impossible until you win. And that's where we're at right now. High stakes. High stakes on climate. High stakes in tomorrow's election day. High stakes in the rise of white supremacy. High stakes, right now, the Supreme Court is hearing, like, presiding over arguments, listening to arguments over the elimination of Roe v. Wade in Texas, right? We're seeing attacks on women's rights. We're seeing attacks on multi-ethnic democracy. We're seeing attacks on our right to live, for Christ's sake. But we have each other. And we have the power to say no. Because saying no collectively together is one gigantic yes. A yes to a future worth living, a yes to the justice that we all deserve. A yes to the equitable distribution of wealth in this country once and for all, and across the world. A yes to a society worth its name. A yes to equality, a yes to justice, a yes to fairness, a yes to love, a yes to care. That's what we can be. Our collective no can be our collective yes to that future. So we've got one concrete task to do for tomorrow. Elect these school board candidates. Vote the Democrats into office. Get rid of these freaking nutjob extremists that are distorting and wrecking public education. That's the immediate ask. You can do that. And then on Wednesday, let's talk about where we go from here. Let's build on what we started building. So everybody, this is Kevin Mahoney, editor and founder of Raging Chicken. Thank you all for sticking with me tonight. I really can't tell you how much this space means to me and how much the support of people over the years have meant for this project, have kept me going. For the folks who tune in every single time we're on, you know, thanks to Emily and Cyril and Shereen, who are at least in the comments tonight. I know there's more people that have come on, but the ones I see right now, I want to give the shout out to. Thank you all for all that you do. Thank you all for the organizing of the ground. Oh, Steve Schnell, make sure you vote for Steve Schnell, over there in Berks County too as well. Paul Martino dumped a bunch of money over there too as well. We can do this. Right? It's going to be a long haul. I have to keep on reminding myself of that. I know that you probably remind yourself of the same thing. But, uh, we can do this if we do this together. So we've got more coming up this week. Make sure you tune in on Wednesday for the Wednesday show with Cyril Micalico. We'll be back on Friday, next Monday with Kirsten Zolfo. Talk to you, everybody. See ya! Vote, 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 vote!